Ideas of which I'm going to involve this? What's up, man? Here's it? Okay. The January twenty-second, twenty-nineteen regular meeting of the Hawthorne City Council is called to order with all members present. Pastor Greg Gish from Sentinel Bible Church will be doing the invocation today. We will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by new council member Mike DiJada.
Let's pray. Father God, we thank you for this day. We ask your blessing on this council meeting. We ask your blessing on the city of Hawthorne. It's a great place to live, Lord, and we ask that you bless these guys and ladies here who are kind of overseeing the business of the city, Lord. We'd like to prosper this year. Thank you for all the goodness we have. Thank you for the good things that have happened here. And Father, we look forward to a year where you're going to be involved in everyone's life and just change things for the best. So we thank you. We humble ourselves before you. We ask your blessing. We humbly ask your blessing on our state and our city. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, everybody place your hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Council member Valentine has a presentation on the agenda today.
I'd like to ask Patricia Donaldson to come to the podium, please, and introduce the presentation.
Okay, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council. Patricia Donaldson, President/CEO of the Hawthorne Chamber of Commerce. I want to let everyone know that we finished our webpage after probably about three years of trying. And we have a presentation for you, and it's going to be someone that I think Olivia might know. It's her son, Omari, and he's going to do the presentation for us. Thank you.
Good evening, council members, Mayor. So I just wanted to come here, I just wanted to introduce the new Hawthorne Chamber of Commerce website. This was a collaborative effort between myself, my company, Alphilip, Patricia, Deena Latimore, Yonda Davis, and, you know, all the Chamber Board members. So without further ado, I want to make sure that I give them their due because they did a great job at helping me pull together the assets that were needed to, you know, to make this a great presentation for you guys. So the first thing, I'm actually going to reload the page because it actually animates a little bit. So the first thing that you can see is that we're messaging the main, we present the main messaging for the Chamber of Commerce as a vehicle to empower businesses that are part of the Chamber of Commerce. So we want to entice businesses to become a part of the Chamber and, you know, take advantage of some of, a lot of the benefits that are offered. So from here, you can go ahead and click the button to become a member. It'll take you to the to a membership application page. Let me go quickly then. So going back to the main page, as we scroll down, you'll see there's a lot of content here. And the content is very important because we want to make sure that people, when they see the page, are aware that this is an active group. There's a lot of, there are a lot of events that are currently happening and that are currently, that are planned. And so if you come to the Chamber, join the Chamber, you will be able to take advantage of many of the great events that are taking place as a part of the organization. So one of the first things you see is a gallery. And the gallery shows some of the past events. Scroll this a little bit faster. Some of the past events that have happened. You can scroll through and see, you know, that there is a lot of activity happening with the Chamber of Commerce. And then a little bit further down the page. We can see the timeline of upcoming events. So obviously, the next thing on the agenda. I think I'll need a plug. Plugin. I don't know. Yeah, no, no, I don't have, this is unfortunate. No. So I'll just, I'll just talk to it. I'll just, you know. So basically, you guys got a sense for what the website looks like. There's a lot of content on the homepage that basically shows past events and current and upcoming events. And as you go through the additional pages, you're able to see some more about the mission statement of the Chamber of Commerce. And, you know, see more about what the, you know, the board members and look at their bios and find out what, you know, what the what the board members are about and what the Chamber is about. And then you can, you can go to the, you can go and, you know, submit your application online. And the application goes to the Chamber, and then from there, you know, we're able to process the application from the office. There are additional updates that are happening with the website that allow members to, potential members, to go to the to go to the page and actually complete the entire application process and complete their, you know, submit their payment online. So that's upcoming feature, upcoming feature updates. But as of right now, we have a really strong site that I think shows a lot of what the Chamber is trying to do. And, you know, I think more events and more, more activity can help. Yeah, I think. Oh, we're back? Okay, thank you. So we're here, but, okay. Give me a second. Okay, great, there you go. All right, so we're back. So as I was saying, I'm actually going to jump ahead to the events page so you can see kind of what I'm talking about. You know, we have some events on the calendar, but I think we could definitely use more, and so we're really looking at working within our group to see what other things we can add to our. To see what we can, sorry about that. So I wanted to make sure that we can add more events to our current calendar right now. We have events listed through May, through June, actually. But we want to, you know, we want to always have additional things that we can add to this, to this list to make, you know, our year seem very full. As people come to the website, they want to see, you know, that we're doing a lot of active, there's a lot of activity. And that, I think, that will entice visitors to come and actually come to some of the Chamber events and potentially even join. And as I was also mentioning, we have the About page, and the About shows kind of some more details about what our, what the mission statement of the Chamber of Commerce is. And then we and then we can also see our Board of Directors. So that is, that's the webpage in a nutshell. And I certainly would like to open up the floor. Any questions?
Definitely looks very crisp, very easy to navigate. The previous one, we give credit to the gentleman who managed the one before, Mr. Simone. But this is definitely taken to a higher level, and I congratulate you on this project that you completed.
Thank you.
To the chair. Yeah, congratulations for the website. Can we find, like, for example, the member, all the member of the business that belongs to the Chamber on that website?
That's something that we're actually implementing now. So that's one of the upcoming updates that we're going to do where we'll be able to, because we have, we have the list currently, and we want to be basically implementing a a feature that allows us to add new members, so we don't just have a static list. And so that's basically, that's on, that's happening right now. Actually, we're almost finished with that feature, so.
Is there a way that, for example, our city website can be direct to the Chamber website? Like a connection?
Yeah, we can certainly link from the city website. So if you want to put a link on the city website to the Chamber and back to the city from the Chamber website, that's, you know, totally.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Anyone else?
Oh. Well, you could go up there with him if you're part of the presentation, ma'am.
Oh, yeah, okay. So anybody can pull this up. You guys can all pull it up and check it out. It's actually pretty, looks pretty nice on a phone as well. The web address is HTTPS, double forward slash WWW.HawthorneChamberOfCommerce.com.
Okay.
Easy to remember.
Hawthorne, HawthorneChamberOfCommerce.com.
All one word.
Very good. One word, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, it's right down top.
Excellent. Any further questions from my council colleagues?
Just through the chair. Congratulations on a very robust website. It's very easy to navigate. It looks like it's going to be a real boost for the Hawthorne Chamber of Commerce. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, sir. Mr. Clerk, please read the guidelines for communications, sir.
Any person desiring to address the City Council should complete a speaker request card and submit the card to the City Clerk prior to the commencement of the meeting. After obtaining permission to proceed by the presiding officer, speakers should first state their full name and address for the record. They then shall state their business for all governing bodies briefly and completely, unless granted further time by a governing body. Shall limit their address to three minutes. The three-minute limit shall include governing body or staff responses to queries posed by speakers. However, the state open meetings law prohibits the City Council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any item not contained on the agenda posted seventy-two hours before a regular meeting and twenty-four hours before a special meeting. All remarks shall be addressed to the governing bodies as a body and not to any particular member thereof. The governing body may either dispose of the communication at the close thereof or may refer to it to an appropriate administrative officer for study, investigation, report, and/or recommendation. Discussion, if any, shall be by members of a governing body only. Materials related to an item on the agenda submitted to the City Council after distribution of the agenda packet are available for public inspection in the City Clerk's office during normal business hours.
Pat Donaldson. Hawthorne Chamber of Commerce.
Good evening again, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and City Council. I wanted to announce that our State of the City will be March seventh at the Memorial Center, and our registration is at eleven AM. Our photos with the mayor is at eleven-thirty, and we'll have a photo booth. And then the event starts at twelve noon. And tables are going quickly, so if you're interested in a table or for an individual seat, then you can just call the Chamber at three-ten-six-seven-six-eleven-six-three. Now, the other thing that I would like to do is, I would like to introduce our board, and then we have one new board member. Not all the board is here, but some of them did come to help with the website. So we have Denise Compo, stand up. She's with Southern California Gas Company. She's on our board. We have Yonda Davis, and she's an entrepreneur. And then we have Robert Thompson, who took Richard Garcia's place with Cal Waters. So he's our new board member. And so those are the three that came to support the webpage this evening. So Robert, would you like to come real quick and say something? Since he's a new board member? And then after he does, I just want to introduce a new Chamber member real quick.
All right, so you'll pass that on to him? Go ahead.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, council members, staff. My name's Robert Thompson, Operations Manager with California Water Service. You've worked with probably one of my proteges in the past. Operating the contract system here in town, right down the street, matter of fact. This is my eleventh day on the job, and I'm really looking forward to kind of building the relationships with each and every one of the council members, mayor, sir, and also city staff. Looking forward to that and seeing how we can further improve the system here locally and build in the future.
Congratulations. Thank you for stepping up, sir.
Definitely, sir.
And now I would like to introduce one of our new Chamber members, and it's Carolyn Johnson with ALJ Co. Am I saying it right? Okay, come on up. She's in the same complex as our Chamber of Commerce, and I would like to present her with a plaque, and I'd like you to take a minute or two and tell everyone about what you do.
Sure. Hi, good evening. My name is Carolyn Johnson. I'm with ALJ CO. She mentioned we're located in the same complex as the Hawthorne Chamber, and it's a privilege to be here. And we're an appliance distributor. We specialize in commercial laundry sales, equipment distribution, parts and service. And we've been around for many years. We came from El Segundo, then moved into Hawthorne, and it's a pleasure being here. It's a wonderful city to be in and a, it's very friendly for businesses. And I appreciate the opportunity to be able to grow our business here and hopefully staff more people, bring in some revenues to the city if we can. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Congratulations to the new board. Thank you for volunteering your time apart from your regular duties, work, and your other commitments. Thank you, guys. Gordon Michael Migo? He's not here? Okay, the, oh, no, there he is. I just wanted to see you run. I just wanted to see if I could make you run, man. That was it. Sorry, it didn't work.
Too fast for you, huh?
Yeah, you're fast. Flash Gordon, that's right. Flash Gordon.
Name's Gordon Michael Migo, native resident of Hawthorne since October the eighth, nineteen fifty-two. The city of Hawthorne, with a population of nearly a hundred thousand residents, surely can become a major destination point, especially the greater downtown area of our community in the South Bay region of Los Angeles. We must not allow personal considerations to derail it. Recent improvements in the economic outlook, according to a UCLA report, will help lead the way. During the next two years, excuse me, we will need to focus attention on important issues, especially the following. One, the Hawthorne Renaissance Plaza. The revitalized mall site with its new name can serve the community and beyond as a place for shopping, dining, entertainment, relaxing, and so on. Let us pursue efforts at various levels to make it a reality. Two, Hospital Medical Center. Modern, state-of-the-art facilities with a full range of health care services can serve the people of Hawthorne and the region under a public-private partnership. Let us enact an ordinance to create a multi-jurisdictional authority for the hospital to utilize some Measure HH funds for that purpose and to set up a task force for overseeing the project. And I might add, interestingly, the HH and Measure HH could stand for Hawthorne Hospital. Three, Aerospace Museum, the relocated Museum of Flying from Santa Monica can provide a tourist attraction that includes an airfare that we've missed for many years for Hawthorne in partnership with SpaceX and other corporations and foundations such. Let us enter into negotiations to establish a first-class facility here in Hawthorne. Four, Hawthorne, a hundredth anniversary. Celebration in the year twenty-twenty-two can include a float, a band, drill team, civic leaders, and so on, at the Rose Parade in partnership with major corporations and others. Let us set up a committee of residents, businesspeople, civic leaders to make this so. By working together, we can make the city of Hawthorne great again in the twenty-first century. Let us be bold and daring in our approach to make it a reality. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next person is Dwayne Tucker, LA County Sanitation District.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Dwayne Tucker. I am a twenty-seven-year employee of the Los Angeles County Sanitation District and a South Bay resident and homeowner. Standing with me is Malika Jones, a longtime employee of the Sanitation District, I believe thirteen years, also as an engineer. She's also a Hawthorne homeowner and voter. We are ASME members, speaking on behalf of nearly one thousand fellow employees at the Sanitation Districts. As you may know, the Sanitation Districts has vast, solid waste and wastewater operations for seventy-eight cities, including Hawthorne. The workforce takes great pride in industry recognition we receive every year for delivering world-class services along with exceptionally low rates. For instance, the Orange County Sanitation District's rates are nearly double what we charge. So I'm here tonight because we, the unfortunate fact is the Sanitation Districts are embroiled in labor management turmoil, and our longstanding impasse in negotiations could spill over into the communities that we serve, including Hawthorne. Despite the excellent service we provide, Sanitation Districts are attempting to cut our total compensation and for no good reason. Over the course of negotiations in past, we have been through both fact-finding and mediation. The fact-finder confirmed two very important facts. The first, the districts can't afford what the Sanitation Districts, Sanitation workers are asking, and what we are asking will not increase rates not one penny. Not only are the districts attempting to hurt its employees without financial or good justification, but they are attempting to bully us into submission by withholding our last two years of cost of living allowances and even though they have already collected the money to pay them. The fact is that numerous cities across the districts have negotiated for payment of their pension contributions from their employees by offering them a corresponding raise and a little bit more for cost of living. Our union is asking for the same arrangement. To be clear, we are willing to pay our fair share, but we are not willing to be abused. Two consecutive polls of ASME's membership have confirmed that they will reject the district's arbitrary painful takeaways and will take job action up to including a strike, if need be. While we don't relish that prospect, it's time to raise public awareness more broadly now because the policy decisions of the districts will lead to a challenging task of hiring more qualified workers in the future and could lead to a strike. Because of all this, we urge you to sign a letter, that I have a sample of here for you tonight, asking the Sanitation Districts to withdraw its unreasonable proposal and join other cities who have already sent letters like this. I appeal to you, our mayor and Mayor Pro Tem Awad, who sit on our board, as well as the rest of the board members here, to exert your influence to bring up or facilitate an immediate agreement that will serve everybody's best interest. Thank you for your support in this matter.
Thank you, sir. Would anybody else like to address the City Council? Or does it matter which side? I'm sorry, I guess. No one else wishing to address the City Council? Okay. Let's have, whoever's going to speak, if you could start forming a line so we could get an idea. Okay. Go ahead, ma'am. Welcome, Commissioner.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members, city staff, and neighbors. Several things. I'm wearing several hats tonight, so first of all, I wanted to say it is that time of year again for Vietnam Veterans of America South Bay Chapter Fifty-three and their scholarship essay program. As usual, we are in our twenty-fourth year of trying to give one thousand dollar scholarships to local high school seniors. And I have the flyers and the posters that just literally were picked up on the way over here tonight. So I will have a number of these here. I have flyers with me as well, so if any of you have high school seniors. This is the same process that we've been through for the past twenty-four years. It's a one-page essay. You interview a Vietnam veteran. You write an essay addressing certain suggested issues. And you have it in two, by email, by Wednesday, April seventeenth, twenty nineteen. And it is a hard deadline, so if your essay is not received at that at that email address by that particular time, your essay won't even be considered. Again, we're looking to give one thousand dollar cash scholarships for a five-hundred-word essay. One page, folks. Pretty good odds. So see me if you want information about that. Any of the school people that are here tonight, I'll be happy to give you copies that you can distribute. Second thing, as Chair of the Hawthorne Veterans Affairs Commission, there was an article in the LA Times over the past forty-eight hours or thereabouts that was headlined "Two Tenants at VA Site in West LA Under Fire." I have been going to all of the meetings pertaining to the West LA Master Plan for the past five years. And I will tell you from my perspective, having attended meeting after meeting after meeting after meeting, there's a great deal of misinformation in this article. I don't want to take up the council's time on this tonight, but because of the holiday yesterday, our regularly scheduled Veterans Affairs Commission meeting was not held yesterday on the holiday. It will be held tomorrow in these chambers at three-fifteen. We will be discussing these issues. If anybody has questions about what was alleged in this article, please come tomorrow, or please see me afterwards, and I'll clear up everything to the best of my ability. And the last thing that I wanted to mention, I know you're going to be voting on approving the meeting minutes from the last time in a minute. And according to the information that was sent out on the website that may have been corrected in between, there is a mistake on one of the meeting minutes in terms of who voted for what. It's a significant correction that needs to be made. I can show you what it is before you vote, or hopefully someone's caught it in the meantime, but in case.
You can announce it right here. It's okay.
I'd have to pull my phone out. It's on the, it's on the second page of the meeting minutes that you're going to be voting on approval, and it showed what the election results were. And it shows that the people who voted in favor did not include Mayor Pro Tem Awad. He's not listed. It listed Councilwoman Valentine, Councilmember Vargas, and a previous mayor. Just saying. Hopefully.
Can you just go ahead and say what previous mayor it was?
It calls out Mayor Brown and has you as a council member. So I'm sure it was just boilerplate that didn't get caught. Hopefully, it got caught before the packets went to you. But in terms of the packets that went out to the community, it's a significant error, and before you voted on it, I just I'm sorry I didn't get here early enough to say something directly.
If you want, you could, you could like point this out on the side, like a little sidebar, please? Very important. Thank you, ma'am. We really appreciate you. Thank you, ma'am. Go ahead, next person.
Good evening, council. I'm Pastor John L. Jefferson of the Del Air Baptist Church here in Hawthorne. And I'm coming to give my support to Chief Ishi and his appointment here as the new chief in the city of Hawthorne. I want to thank the council on selecting him for that position, and I'm looking forward to working with him in the future.
Thank you, Pastor. Anybody else wishing to address the City Council?
My name, council members, my name is Darlene Love, Olive, twenty-oh-three, West Hundred and Sixteenth Street in Holly Park. I'm here to give the chief. I think he's very, very nice. I think he'll be very good. He's young. He's a nice-looking young man, and, you know, it does something for us old folks to have a few youths still hanging around, so please, put him in. You have my vote. If I can stand and vote, I will stand. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Pastor, welcome. How you doing?
Happy New Year to the council, to the mayor, everybody. God bless you. I'm also, we're going to stand in for Chief Ishi. Ishi, God bless you. We're praying for you with the Hawthorne Pastoral Association and the city of Hawthorne. We thank you. We know that you're a nice guy, but we know that you're hard on crime, and that's what we need. And thanks for all the servicemen here. Have a great night.
Thank you, Pastor. Anyone else wishing to address the City Council? Let's see, let's go. All right. If not, I'll declare oral communications close ordered. What I'm going to do today, we have three, I think, four items, three items from the discussion that I want to bring up. Please. A, C, and D. The reason I'm leaving B is because the selection of committees usually takes a longer time. But the first one is going to is going to involve appointing Councilwoman Olivia Valentine to Mayor Pro Tem. C is going to be with regards to preparing an ordinance limiting the mayor pro tem term to one year. And is Jasmine Esquivias here? Okay. Jasmine Esquivias. All right, she's not here, so we're gonna, so just. Okay, Jasmine Esquivias. All right, she's not here, so we're gonna, so just, A, C, and the chief's contract. Do I have any opposition to that, or are we good? All right, let's go ahead. So, my first item is the reorganization of city council, appointing Olivia Valentine as Mayor Protam for one-year term. Do I have a second for that?
Second.
Okay, we're going to vote on this, but before I do that, I want to thank Mayor Protam Hadar Awad for representing me so well for meetings that he's attended in my stead when I haven't been able to attend. He's served for these last couple of years, and he's gone to the sanitation district pretty much consistently for me since it's in the daytime and I do work, and so he's my alternate, and he's been going faithfully to that and the other representations that he has had for me. So, let's give him a round of applause and show him some appreciation for what he's done. So now, if we could move on and vote for the, for this item, for Councilwoman Olivia Valentine as Mayor Protam. Please vote. All right, let's, make sure you show him exactly where the buttons are, because if he meant to vote yes... Can we inter-delineate that? All right, go ahead.
Can announce it, yeah?
Can you do a roll call for the...
Well, I vote yes.
The one up to the far left. Can you do a roll call just since, since it's not really accurate up there? Oh, like the thing right there?
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes. Please note that Mike Toledo voted yes.
Thank you, that's good. Thank you very much, appreciate that. All right, thank you, folks. So, item, letter C, is directing the city attorney to prepare an ordinance amendment limiting the Mayor Protam term to one year. Even though, like, we've had two occurrences within the last six years or so that where council members have served two years in the Mayor Protam for whatever the dynamics were there, whatever it was. I've strongly, always advocated for a one-year term for the Mayor Protam, so that everybody gets an opportunity to serve. And, I mean, Councilmember Michelin would have had an opportunity if we would have had that happen, but it wasn't the case. So, now I kind of want to make it official, and with the intention that once that, this year's up, that the next elected official, Councilmember Montero, serves that term. And once reelected, hopefully reelected, my, Councilmember Mike Toledo will serve, and then it would rotate amongst seniority, amongst the council members, just to make it less political, so everybody gets a chance to do it. Okay? Maybe even when we come back with the, with the ordinance, maybe we could have some type of process there on choosing the next person, so that it falls naturally. But I just signaled my intent, and I think with regards to seniority that I see right now, I mean, you've got, you're going to serve?
Yes, thank you.
Then he, then Councilmember Tieda, Councilmember Hadar Awad has served two years. So, it's just kind of a natural thing where everybody gets a chance. I mean, that's, I think, the best thing. Take politics out of it, and all that dynamic that goes along with it. What do you guys, so moves? Do I have a second? Okay, please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes. Please note that Mike Toledo voted yes.
Thank you. That's good. And so, I'm leaving item, letter B on there, so we can come back and discuss that, only because that takes a lengthier amount of time. And I wanted to bring up item number twenty-two, which is the formal appointment of Mike Ishi as a chief of police services and approval of the related employment contract, which I want to make a motion for. Do I have a second?
Second.
You want to give it to him? Okay, please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes. Please note that Mike Toledo voted yes.
Okay, so, we want to congratulate the, the new Mayor Protam, Olivia Valentine, and our new chief, Mikey Ishi. Let's give them both a round of applause. Excellent. So now, we can go back to the item number six, Mr. City, Mr. City Clerk. Can you go ahead and read the consent calendar, please, sir?
Mr. Mayor, I have seven items on my consent calendar for your approval. Item six, approval of city council minutes for the regular meeting of December eleventh, twenty eighteen, and the special meeting of December twentieth, twenty eighteen. Item seven, approval of waiver of full readings of resolutions and ordinances on Tuesday, January twenty-second, twenty eighteen's agenda. Motion to waive full readings. Item eight, city treasurer requests approval of the warrants. Item eleven, resolution number eight zero four two. A resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, authorizing the city manager to execute a cooperative agreement between the city of Hawthorne and the city of Gardena regarding paratransit services, ratifying services for fiscal years twenty sixteen through seventeen and twenty seventeen through twenty eighteen, and approval of services for fiscal years twenty eighteen through nineteen, twenty nineteen, and twenty nineteen through twenty twenty. Item twelve, resolution number eighty forty-three. A resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, authorizing approving and ratifying the sub-middle of the fiscal year twenty eighteen Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program local solicitation. Item thirteen, resolution number eight zero four four. A resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, proclaiming January as National Blood Donor Month. Motion to adopt.
I'd like to move to table number eleven at the request of city attorney.
Was it city, was it eleven?
Eleven.
The one that you mentioned earlier to me?
Correct.
That you had mentioned? Okay. Can we vote on all items except eleven? And if we need to make a special vote to table, then we'll do so. So, let's make a motion on all items with the exception of eleven.
I still need one more to read.
Number fourteen?
Yeah. When she went in, I thought it was over. Sorry about that. Sorry about that.
So, item number fourteen, resolution number eight zero four six. A resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, accepting a donation of North Systems, Inc., pool covers and related improvements at the Hawthorne Pool, located at twelve five oh one Inglewood Avenue, Hawthorne, by the New Hall Land and Farming Company, LLC, for adoption.
I make the same motion for all items with the exception of eleven?
Second.
Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes. Please note that Mike Toledo voted yes.
I make a motion to table eleven?
Second.
Mr. City Attorney, is that correct, that I make the motion to table it, or there's no action needed on our part?
No actions needed. I'll bring it back.
Okay, so we'll just leave it as is. Okay, thank you. Mr. City Manager, your consent calendar, please, sir?
Mr. Mayor, I have items eighteen through twenty-one for your approval tonight.
I move?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, seconded by Councilmember Alex Montero. Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes. Please note that Mike Toledo voted yes.
Mr. City Attorney, can we have your consent calendar, please, sir?
I have items number twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six. And Councilmember Awad will recuse himself from item number twenty-four because the underlying claim involves robbery of his business.
All right. No, no, I don't think, does he have to leave?
You don't have to leave for this one.
I mean, if you want to do it for formality's sake, just right there. Yes, just to make it all fully official. That sounds cool. Thank you.
Want to just take item number twenty-four alone?
Item number twenty-four? Well, let's, let's just vote. Why don't we, what can, oh, no, no. I move on item number twenty-five, and, no, I move on item number twenty-four. Give them a chance to vote on the others. Got it?
Thanks.
Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes with Councilmember Awad abstaining, or...
No, abstention is a formal position, so what would that be, Mr. City Attorney? Could you please advise?
Mr. Awad recused himself.
With Mr. Awad recusing himself, and please note that Mike Toledo voted yes.
Wow, Mike Toledo's really getting a lot of attention today. All right, Councilmember Awad, if you can hear us, there he was. So, we just want to give you an opportunity to vote on twenty-five and twenty-six with us. I make a motion for item twenty-five and twenty-six. Do I have a second?
Second.
Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes. Please note that Mike Toledo voted yes.
All right, I have an additional two items on the, at the, on the discussion action items. The city clerk's office, if you guys could reach out to the young lady for her swearing-in at the next meeting? Just let's make sure, because I know they've been saying that they've had issues getting back on track with the youth commission. So, it's really important that she shows up.
Definitely. We'll take care of it.
Okay, thank you, sir. Letter B, selection of council members to represent city on committees. We're going to go one by one, and if anybody can signal their intent, availability is a very big important factor in this. So, let's proceed with Centinella Youth Services. There may be people here that might want to just stay on some of these committees. They could let us know. Whoever speaks first?
I'd like to stay on.
Okay. Would you like to stay?
Yeah.
Excellent. All right, so what am I, I'm going to put a blue mark next to the stuff here. All right, excellent. For the city selection committee, I'd like to stay on as the delegate.
I'll stay as the alternate.
Okay, is, anybody else, okay, everybody else is good?
What time and date is that one?
The city selection committee is sometimes, mostly in the, it's been in the day recently. They've had a couple, like, in the evening.
What day of the week?
It's spontaneous.
I would do it, but I, I, you know, Thursday night is a bad night. Do it just about any other night.
I think some of them have popped up on Thursday nights at Luminaria's restaurant, so...
I mean, as an alter, as an alternate, I could do it, but it may be the Thursday night that I cannot go.
Could we have two alternates, Mr. City Attorney? Just in case I can't go, we'll just keep it to one?
Thursday night, I'll go in behalf of you?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, bro.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But I think, am I, or how about this? Well, what, what can we do, Mr. City Attorney? I mean, you kind of see...
How often can't you make it? Do you make the most of it?
Well, I send proxy.
Every second month, on the fourth Thursday of every month, every other month, I have a prior commitment. So, like, this Thursday, then I won't do it until March, and then May.
But why don't we just put Mike as the second alternate? And, you know, if it happens to, he can't make it that particular Thursday.
The meetings are during the day or in the evening?
I'll jump in.
Can we, let's just have both equal alternates. How about that? Alternate for both, just, and then whoever can go? Because that's a tough one, because they have it in the morning, they have it odd, it's not even, it's not even fixed hours. All right, thank you, gentlemen, so... County Sanitation District, folks, I'm, I'm supposed to be the, the main delegate? Anybody else want to do the alternate, or you want to stay on? Councilwoman, Mayor Protam?
I'll, I'll do it. I'll be the alternate.
Will you be okay with that?
It has to be either mayor or Mayor Protam.
Oh, it is? Oh, all right, just, all right, well... For the Independent Cities Association, I'd like to stay on.
Put my Alex Montero.
All right, excellent. Let's see. Make sure you guys take your notes so the, so that we check over here once the minutes come around. For the ICRMA, Mayor Protam?
I'd like to remain, oh, delegate.
That's, that's been one that you really like, huh?
Yeah.
Okay, you're going to, who would like to be the alternate?
I can, I can do, I can be the alternate there.
I think we had previously taken off Hador's name, because ICRMA only allows one alternate, and we had decided to make Allison the alternate.
So, Allison is still the alternate?
She is the alternate.
So, why isn't it, what's going on right here? Wait, okay, let's...
It just wasn't updated.
Uh-oh. So, so it's going to be Allison, our, one of our deputy city attorneys? So, would you, no, because it, what's, what's the reason? Can you explain so that he knows, and everybody understands why she...
Some of these meetings are like seven or eight hours. I don't think you would like to sit in a seven-hour meeting, huh?
No.
Are you sure?
Does that change your perspective?
I'm pretty sure about that. When I'm new at this, but I...
You're eager, but not that eager?
I don't want to stand out that much.
That's why it's what it's named.
Do we have the student coming here for her swearing-in? Is she, is she on her way? Okay, hopefully she shows up. This is very important. You guys have been asking us for this, all right? Thank you, sir. All right, so it's Allison Stevens, League of, League of California Cities, LA County Division.
I'd like to be the delegate.
Yes, yes.
I can do that if it's on the first Thursday of the month.
Yeah, I didn't know it was the alternate of all these. Oh, I didn't.
You didn't?
There's a lot of alternates.
Somebody got sneaky and put you on all these.
Mr. Mayor, am I signing up for too many things, or...
Oh, not...
You're okay. Like, is there's nothing preventing the alternates to go along with the main delegate to some of these, okay? So, just check the rules of each committee? If you're interested in going to some of these, and the alternate's going, just kind of double-check with yourself, or both of you together, just check with the committee and its management board, or whatever. If you get, you know, if it's okay, kosher for you guys to go together. South Bay cog, let me guess?
Oh, I'd like to be the delegate.
Okay.
So, so now, on the League of California Cities, it's Mike Toledo delegate? Is that how you...
No, he's alternate. You're the main delegate.
I'm the main delegate on that one, okay.
You're the prime on that.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, can you go back and review? So, for the previous one, the Independent Cities Risk Management, what was the decision on delegate?
Olivia Valentine, Mayor Protam is the main, the delegate, and the alternate is Allison Stevens. And we'll go back, once we go down, we'll just kind of just summarize it at the end, make sure you guys got everything. So, just for our sake, to everybody up here. The South Bay cog, which is the South Bay City Council of Governments, let me guess? Yeah? Let me guess, who wants to be the delegate?
I'd like to be the delegate.
Nobody wants to do it? What, what, what?
That was the Miss Valentine.
No, I know, I know.
Oh, but...
This is one of her favorites.
Yeah, the meeting date is fourth Thursday. That needs to be changed, and the time is six P.M.
The first Thursday?
Not on Monday.
Fourth Thursday.
It does say that.
Does it?
Fourth Thursday of the month. Fourth.
It's fourth Thursday. Is that what it says on yours?
Yeah.
Okay. It's not what it says on mine.
Mine is said on Monday, second Monday.
Let me see, let me see, let me see.
Right, it says fourth.
What's going on? All right.
Ah, it says fourth Monday, yeah, the second, yeah.
There's a little formatting thing I want to request. It's like, after meeting date, after the colons, if you could put like a space or two? Just because then that's kind of like, it's not easy to pick up what the designation, so if you could just do it on all these, please. The South Bay Regional Public Communications Authority Board of Directors, has, has there, I mean...
Yeah.
If this is something you want to stay on, have they, have they called you for meetings?
Go with Arnie all the time.
Yeah, is that something you enjoy?
Yeah.
You want to do it? All right. Who would like to be the alternate on this? Alternate? All right. Yeah, there's still some, there's still a page around. All right, so... And if we had to, in the mid, the middle of the year, change this for somebody, you know, for somebody not being able to, we can do that. But let's just try to get it as close to what we need as... let's just try to get it as close to what we need as possible right here. For SCAG, I would like to be the main delegate.
I could do that, uh...
SCAG?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's nine o'clock in the morning, first Thursday, yeah.
Well, actually, what I'm going to do is, I'm going to... I'm going to recuse myself from that committee, and I'll leave it open for anybody else to be the main delegate. Well, weren't you going to SCAG, or was that the, no? It was the cog, right?
Cog.
Were you, were you the main one for SCAG at, at one point?
At one time, I was.
Alright.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not volunteering this time.
Would you like to be the main for the SCAG? You'd have to go to all of them. And then you have, you have an alternate from one of us here. Maybe the two of you guys could do it?
Yeah, well, okay, I mean, uh...
Well, see, the first Thursday, I'm gonna get the Clean Power Alliance, so I cannot...
Okay, well, I can do that.
You'll be the main?
Maybe, you wanna join me?
Yeah, I'll drop in as the alternate for you.
Okay, good. And Hader.
Excellent, very good, that's good. Mike Tayeda as the delegate, and, uh, Hader Awad as the alternate. Southern California Cities Consortium, GPA. Uh, what's the status of that, Mr. City Manager? Is that an active committee? Not really?
I've been quite a while, especially we joined, uh, the, uh, joint power agreement, uh, power alliance.
Is this something we, is this something we should strike?
Uh, I guess so.
So, we strike, we strike this committee. Strike the Southern California Cities Consortium, GPA. The West Basin Water Association Board of Directors.
I'd like to remain delegate.
Excellent. Alternate? SCAG is a really important one too, Mr. Tayeda, council member. So, you're gonna have your hands full on that one. A lot of reports coming back.
And the, the meeting date on that?
Only in terms of RENA number.
Actually, very, very good point, because the, the RENA numbers, you know how we wanna push back on that stuff? That's your baby.
Yeah.
Yeah, we need to minimize those numbers.
We're gonna have a lot of work to do on that, too.
Oh, yeah.
We're gonna have a lot of work to do.
We're supposed to do what like these little fancy cities around us don't wanna do.
Okay.
You know?
We'll push back.
Yeah, there we go.
West Basin meets on fourth Mondays. Does everyone have that? Cause mine, mine didn't say that.
Fourth Monday?
Uh-huh.
Not the first?
No.
Is that a correction?
Uh, it should be, it should be fourth Monday.
Fourth Monday. MTA Met...
Yes.
So, moving on to the MTA Metro, South Bay Cities Service Council, was that an active group?
Yes.
Okay.
Councilmember English was attending that one, in the city of Inglewood.
Anybody else? She had a good relation over there with the, with the people over there, so she would...
I'm close by, I could pick it up.
Do you wanna be the main on that?
Yeah.
I can be an alternate on that.
Okay. And again, if, there's nothing to, uh, prevent you from going and attending along with your, with the main delegate. The days that, that he, he, he's gonna go, you can still go. Or if you just wanna wait till like he calls on you or something.
Okay, time permitting, I'd like to just hang out, you know?
Yeah.
Have coffee and bond. Have coffee and bond.
Okay, alright, well, look, I'm easy.
The Clean Power Alliance?
I'll be the delegate.
This is a very demanding one, but Doug is gonna help you. So, Doug Kraus is the alternate.
Okay, let's...
Actually, we have two alternates, Doug Kraus and Frank Feng from Fines.
How do I spell Doug Kraus's last name? With two S's?
Kraus, yes, two S. And Frank Feng, if F-E-N-G.
Alright, we're gonna read these all. Take the time to read them all at the end, for the record, so it's on the tape and stuff. LA County West Vector and Vector Born Disease Control District?
Um, I'd like to remain, um, delegate.
Did you guys meet at any point?
Yes.
A couple few times?
Yes. Every other month.
Okay, that sounds good. Anybody wanna serve as the alternate for that? Wanna deal with some bugs and pests?
Sure, I'll be, I'll be down.
You do wanna deal with Doug, uh, the pests and the stuff? Disease prevention? Alright, this is, so then this is good. You say you're doing it wrong. You step on them like this. Alright, alright. LA, LA X Advisory Committee, um, Olivia Valentine and Mario Chiappe. I don't see any reason to change those up.
Okay.
It's Mr. City Attorney? Unless anybody shows some interest. Mr. City Attorney? Yeah?
Is it Councilmember Valentine?
Yeah, and, uh, Mr. Mario Chiappe, is there any reas, do, did we, is his, uh, is his term up? Or was there a definite term for Mr. Chiappe? Or should we just leave as is, because everything's okay?
Yeah, we just leave it as it is.
Leave it as is? If anybody shows any interest, they'll come up, but what is his term for? We just need to make sure we know how, how long the terms are.
I don't think there is a term.
There's no, it's indefinite.
indefinite, alright, cool. The Communities Network Committee?
It's again Mayor Protem Valentine and, uh...
Nope, I don't have anything. Her name doesn't appear on here.
Yeah, but, uh, because it's newly formed.
That was the airport network meeting?
It's our own airport network com.
Alright, fine. Shouldn't we put her on here as a deli, city council delegate? So, I'm gonna add that as ci- city council delegate.
Term indefinite.
But again, we, uh, any residents can go there, like, like me, for example, right?
Absolutely. Meetings are the thir- Thursday of the month?
It's every, well, it's going to be third Thursdays, but it's, um, every, it's every quarter, it's not every month.
Quarterly meeting.
So, let's put that down. Quarterly?
Third Thursdays quarterly.
Okay, I'm gonna go through this, I'm gonna try to give my best to, um, give like the whole rundown. Alright, let's start off with Centi- Centinela Youth Services. Everything stays as is. The City Selection Committee, the only change to that is we're adding a second alternate, Mike Tayeda. We're, we're keep, we're not calling him first alternate or second alternate, we're just leaving alternate for both of them. County Sanitation District number five, instead of, uh, councilmember Awad, we have Mayor Protem Olivia Valentine. Independent Cities Association, instead of Angie Reyes English, Alex Montero. Independent Cities Risk Management Authority, instead of, uh, Hader Awad, Allison Stevens. It's good we updated now. League of California Cities, Los Angeles County Division, the main delegate will be Olivia Valentine, and the alternate will be Mike Tayeda. South Bay Cities Council of Governments, better known as the cog, the alternate, uh, instead of Hader Awad, will be now be Alex Montero. For the South Bay Regional Public Communications Board of Directors?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, did, did we, did you make the change on South Bay Cog? It's at six, it's at six PM, fourth Thursday at six PM?
Yeah, the, the one I have right here in front of me has it.
Okay.
Yeah, this is the most current one, it seems like. Thanks for mentioning that. South Bay Regional Public Communications Authority Board of Directors, instead of Angie Reyes English, the alternate will now be Alex Montero. For SCAG, the next page on the top, instead of, uh, Alex Vargas, Mike Tayeda will be the delegate, and the alternate, instead of Olivia Valentine, will now be Hader Awad. We're striking all of Southern California Cities Consortium in its entirety, it's gone, no more committee. The West Basin Water Association Board of Directors, instead of Angie Reyes English, it will be Alex Montero. And the meeting date will be, now be the fourth Monday of the month, so... The MTA Board, the MTA Metro, South Bay City Service Council, instead of Angie Reyes English, it will be, uh, Hader Awad. It's the alternate, it's no longer vacant, strike vacant, it will now be Mike Tayeda. You got that too, right? So, the LA, the Clean Power Alliance, uh, we need to fix, uh, so Alex Montero will be the delegate instead of Angie Reyes English. There will be two, uh, equal alternates, so you're gonna alternate, alternate, Doug Kraus being the first one, K-R-A-U-S-S-E. Like, I asked you guys. Oh, my God, you guys make me look bad. Make me look really bad, man.
She said if it was two S's.
I did ask, did I?
Two S's, but not the E.
Ijole. Okay, you take care of it, man, I know you're on top of it.
Got you.
Vacant, uh, so the second alternate, well, you know, it's gonna be alternate, alternate, Frank Feng, F-E-N-G. Alright, cool, we're almost finished. LA County Vector, West Vector and Vector Born Disease, it's no longer vacant, strike vacant, Alex Montero will be the alternate. And going all the way down to the bottom, the meeting date is third Thursday of the month, but in parentheses, we wanna put quarterly, so that, that's noted there. And we also wanna put somewhere in there, city council delegate, colon, Olivia Valentine, because, and that's it. Is everybody taking note of that? So, alright, so I, I make a motion to ratify these, uh, appointments. Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes. Please note that Mike Tayeda voted yes.
Okay. Elected officials' reports and recommendations. Mr. City Treasurer?
I think Mr. Mayor don't have a lot to say, except for Happy New Year, um, Happy Martin Luther King Junior Day, which was yesterday. I wanna thank the community for coming out and participating in the process, making voices heard, um, just being involved in how decisions are made on your behalf, uh, for your community.
Thank you, sir. Mr. City Clerk, Paul Hibenes, doctor?
Yes, uh, just a few things. So, first of all, Happy Belated MLK Day. Uh, second of all, I attended the Voter Center Placement Project Grassroots Community Meeting, um, and there's gonna be a few changes in the next election. Um, these are quick, but it's just important to know at this time. Um, one, there's gonna be up to eleven days for individuals to cast their votes at various voting locations. Uh, two, there'll be more, more voting locations that are based on the community's feedback, so we will be asking the community for their feedback in terms of where we should be putting, uh, voting locations. And three, uh, California's primary election in 2020 will move to the beginning of March. So, instead of June, which is, which is when it was held in 2016, it's gonna move back, uh, it's gonna be earlier this, this coming election. Also, I just wanna thank all of the volunteers from Da Vinci and Science and Math Academy. Um, it was, been really nice to have volunteers help us out in City Hall. They helped us, um, in terms of just organizing our office a little bit, um, and then they're also getting their volunteer hour, so I, I see it, see it as a symbiotic relationship. Um, they're helping us out, and then they're also learning about City Hall, and we're getting some, some youthful blood in here, which I think is really important. Um, I also wanna thank all the department heads who have met with me, um, over the previous month, and, um, last but not least, I wanna thank Monica and Diana, cause they've been really great in terms of transitioning me into my new position, so I still have a lot to learn, but, uh, I appreciate all the, uh, support I've been getting thus far. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your hard work. Alright, so before we move on to the city council members' reports, we do have the candidate for the youth commission. Can you please come on up with, uh, your, one of your fellow, uh, youth commissioners? Come on up, or former youth commissioners, I think you're one of our sponsors or so. So, okay, ma'am, so I make a motion to appoint Jasmine Esquivias to the youth commission. Do I have a second? Okay, it's been moved and seconded, please vote.
The vote reflects mayor, council city, and mayor and city council voting yes. Please note that Mike Tayedo voted yes.
Okay, Mike Tayeda, man, who is this guy?
Started out as Toledo.
Alright, so we're gonna, I'm gonna just swear in?
I heard them pronounce your name right, so then I started doing it correctly. Trying, I thought you were trying to change it up.
That's my name, thank you.
I, Jasmine Esquivias, do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution to the State of California. That I take this obligation freely, without any mental ob, reservation or purpose of invasion, and that I will and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Yes, so thank you all, I'm Jasmine Esquivias. I currently work with the Best Star Communities in South Central LA. I am from Hawthorne. Not born and raised, born in Inglewood, raised in Hawthorne, went to Da Vinci Design, right, so I'm a recent graduate from UC Irvine. Throughout my years in college and in high school, I've worked with youth from early education to higher education. So, currently now, I am the project coordinator of Best Star West Athens, where there is over a million-dollar project where community residents get to implement projects in their community. So, I'm currently overseeing that, and I have worked with the youth commission on several occasions already, and I'm really dedicated to the work that they do and uplifting our youth in our community and giving resources and helping with other projects that need to take place. And so, I'm really truly passionate about this work, and I look forward to working with all of y'all.
Thank you so much, and congratulations. Let's give it up for her once and for all.
Thank you.
Alright, you have a great group of individuals you're gonna be working with on the youth commission, and you already know that since you've been working with them, so thank you very much. Alright, so let's proceed with, uh, let's see, I gotta just kinda try to do this on, just for the sake of seniority, just kinda... Seniority doesn't mean a bad thing, you know, age is a different thing, man, you know? I'm no longer the youngest, so... You're lucky over here. Alright, councilmember Mike Tayeda, your report, just...
Well, I'm just, uh, very grateful to, uh, have an opportunity to serve the people of Hawthorne. I'm really, really looking forward to the next two years and, um, trying to, uh, make a difference in the city. Been in this city for a long, long time, and I really appreciate this opportunity. There's some things that I wanna bring up and talk about, uh, veteran issues, veteran commission. I spent six years on the Planning Commission. There's some ideas that I'd like to, uh, talk about and implement from the Planning Commission, but I've been told that this is not exactly the moment to do all that, to, uh, keep it short and sweet, and I'm trying to follow directions.
Who told you that? You gonna listen to them?
Please listen to us. On behalf of the neighbors.
Yeah, no, that's, uh, that's it for me.
Okay, thank you so much. Councilmember Alex Montero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, Happy New Year. We haven't seen you guys since 2019 began, and Happy MLK Yesterday. Uh, congratulations to Chief Mike Ishi. Welcome, so now you have full-time chief, so we'll see good things and reports coming up soon, right? Just, I did have a meeting with the, with the South Bay Council of Cities, so they have a lot of programs going on that it's, uh, would be good for us to get involved, so Ms. Valentine and I will go to those meetings, uh, because they do have programs that we can take advantage of from... Uh, because they do have programs that we can take advantage, you know, from homeless to some other issues that our cities are dealing with, so. They have good programs there. I met with the Republican Service, the Waste Company. So, uh, maybe in near future, we'll have some announcements to talk about, talk how to clean up Hawthorne, the bulk item and the trash, so. Uh, more information to come soon, so they're gonna talk to their superior over there, cause I give them some ideas and then we'll bring more forward. And potentially also to have a town hall meeting with all the apartment owners in the City of Hawthorne to talk about the trash and the bulk item issues that we're having, so it's coming. Also, let's, this past Saturday, my colleague, Hader Awat and I, attended the Grand Open of the Michael's Learning Place. So they have this catering business called Mike Ish's Coffee Catering and Bakery. So they're right here on, uh, Rose Grant, just south of Inglewood. Uh, no, actually, west of Inglewood, yes. You know how the Michael's Place is all handicapped, you know, childrens and adults, so they have like a beautiful place in there. And now they, they ventured into this business, uh, catering, so we wanna support them. And Council Hader and I, uh, talked about maybe to bring them, maybe not the next meeting, but maybe the meet, the meeting after that, right? Uh, to give us a ten-minute maybe presentation, because they have good programs for handicapped childrens. And now the catering business that have, you know, the truck, so maybe, you know, to give them support, because that's what, the way they, um, generate their funds to keep those programs going. So, uh, we wanna show their, our support and the community support, so maybe to schedule them on the agenda for the second meeting in February to give us a presentation, because, uh, it's good to see these kind of programs in our community and especially for the handicapped childrens that, uh, needs a lot of support. Uh, again, thank you for coming and I'll see you guys soon, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Council Member Hader Awat?
Thank you, Mayor, uh, want to also wish everyone a Happy New Year. Wanted to congratulate, um, our new Chief Mike Ishi to the position. Wanna thank the community for coming out, uh, and as well for the, um, the food truck, what's also nice, what's, uh, it's ran, operated by the kids themselves that have the disability, and I think, um, some of our police officers as well, work with Michael's, uh, quite a bit. Um, so it's just nice to see them come out into the community and see the kind of services we provide to, you know, these kind of individuals. Um, besides that, that is all.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem, Olivia Valentine?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, um, welcome everyone and Happy New Year, and I'd like to also congratulate, um, Captain, uh, I mean, um, Chief Mike Ishi. Thank you so much, um, for all your service so far. So the League of California Cities held its Policy Committees in Sacramento last week, and I've been selected as Vice Chair of the Revenue and Taxation Policy Committee. But because the Chair was absent, I served as Chair last week. This committee is especially concerned with making certain that cities receive funding and tools and that local authority is preserved. There was a lot of information last week, I wanna try and condense it down to something that we can digest. The Governor had just released his budget, the total budget is $209 billion. He is maintaining the fiscal prudence of Governor Brown by increasing the rainy day reserve to $15.3 billion. The Governor proposed major augmentation in several areas, including childcare infrastructure, Cal Works, K through twelve and community colleges, uh, funds to UC and CSU, doubling the state's earned income tax credit for low-income households, expanding medical to serve undocumented youth between nineteen and twenty-five, and providing six months of parental, paid parental leave. So I wanna bring up, bring up a few points, a one point in particular, that I didn't realize the significance of the budget. You'll notice there's a lot of money being put out for, um, for, for programs to, to help the middle and lower-middle-class people and poor people. It's significant that much of the expenditures is meant to answer the troubling economic undercurrent in California. Since 2007, the median income for households with BAs has remained relatively flat at $72,000. But for those with less education, it has gone down, it has declined from $42,000 to $35,000 in the same period, that is significant. Another thing that, um, that, that was raised in that committee and, and throughout the other committees that I, I went to, I also visited other committees. With respect to what cities can expect from the state, I have some good news and some bad news. The good news is that as a result of the Supreme Court's decision in South Carolina versus Wayfair, the State of California can apply its sales tax to internet retailers who sell into California, but have no property or employees in the state. Prior to this decision, the state could not collect sales tax from a retailer unless it had a presence in the state. The League supports the shift of sales and use taxes out of county pools to full destination allocation. The League is going to request an analysis by the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration to, to see how Wayfair is going to impact the city. The good news here again, the League is supporting AB 147, Assemblywoman Burke's Wayfair Implementation Bill. The implementation of the Wayfair decision will result in the collection of hundreds of millions of dollars for state and local agencies from out-of-state and internet-based sales. Implementation is scheduled, scheduled for August, April first of this year, for April first of this year. I am requesting staff to work with the, the League and with the CDTFA, to assure that Hawthorne gets its maximum share when those funds are distributed. So I'm, I'm, I'm issuing that directive, please work with the League and with CDTFA so that Hawthorne will get its maximum share. I'm also requesting that staff research AB 147 and provide us with a draft resolution of support if that is, and, and so that we can consider whether to support it. Now here's the bad news. The Governor wants to build five million new homes by 2025. The Governor has a policy proposal that would empower the Department of Housing and Community Development with top-down authority to dictate local land use policies and penalize local communities if new state quotas are not met. And the, and the, and the, this is a, is a carrot and stick, so the, this, this, they, they will strip the transportation dollars and other vital revenues from the cities if they don't comply. They're taking the carrot and stick approach. They're going to provide millions of dollars for increased housing production if we want to increase our housing. But they're also going to revamp RENA so that HCD has more oversight. And by linking housing production to transportation funds, this is the part that could possibly hurt us. If we don't produce the housing they say we should produce, they'll reduce our transportation funds. That, that's, that, those are the threats. And also by capping local development impact fees. So that's, and then the League is going to be pushing back against the threatened loss of local control, but that is where this is, is going with the, uh, with the state at this point. More bad news. The Bureau of Cannabis Control has authorized statewide delivery of cannabis, even into those cities that have banned sales. The League is pushing back against this as a diminution of local control. I'm, again, I'm going to also make a directive that staff attend the South Bay COGS for upcoming workshops on responsible cannabis regulations, because we have to see how this is going to impact us. We were one of those cities that, um, that, that banned the retail sales and, uh, distribution in our city. But the, the state has now declared that it's going to be statewide delivery and we have to figure out, that will impact us, we have to figure out exactly how. Okay, here's some good news. The Hawthorne Business Expo, we're set to take off tomorrow, January twenty-third, from three to seven PM. The theme is Business Networking in an Electronic World. There will be eight educational workshops at the event. Um, it's free to the public, and this is for the benefit of Hawthorne businesses, we do this to benefit Hawthorne businesses. So we hope the businesses will make it a point to send representatives to observe the event, even if they're not participating. There will be a panel discussion around the theme by three business heavyweights who operate right here in Hawthorne. Ring, the security company, Earth Cafe, which has specialty restaurants and organic food and drinks, and The Lab, a movie studio. So that's going to be a great panel discussion. And there will be raffle prizes throughout the day, right up to seven PM. So we urge everyone to make it a point to come to the Business Expo tomorrow. This is our fourth Business Expo and we wanna make it the best. And Happy Martin Luther King Day, and I want, I, I have a quote from Martin Luther King, the great man whose birthday we celebrated yesterday. "It's more than fifty years old, but it's still appropriate in this age when many people get their news from soundbites and Twitter, instead of seeking real news sources." Quote, "Rarely do we find men who willingly engage in hard, solid thinking. There is an almost universal quest for easy answers and half-baked solutions. Nothing pains some people more than having to think." And that was said more than fifty years ago. That's all I have, thank you, everybody.
Mayor Pro Tem, so my understanding is that the sales tax, we already have to declare how much, even if we don't get charged a sales tax, like on our purchases online, we have to, we have to declare it on taxes currently. So that's still, is, is that changing, or is that just getting formalized, or what?
Well, it's what, what.
Or, what's the thing going on over there?
What's happening is that under the Wayfair decision, cities were not, before the Wayfair decision, um, an internet retailer such as Amazon or what, whoever, did not have to collect taxes for, uh, for, for people that, where, where, where goods were distributed into a particular state. They would not have to collect the state's sales tax, so the state wouldn't get those taxes. So now they will. Now, under the Wayfair decision, the state will get the taxes. The, the online retailer has to collect the taxes for California when it sells to people in California. They didn't have to do that before.
Well, that's been kind of going on when I do my Amazon purchases from outside, so I wonder what, maybe it's been voluntary on some of these companies that have been doing it, right? Is that your understanding?
Well, the Supreme Court decision was, was, um, was this past year. And so this is going to be the implementation of it in, um, in the State of California. Maybe, uh, maybe Russ, you could shed some more light on that, the, the implementation is going to be, um.
Amazon, they were collecting tax because they, they were, they have business in California. They're not saying a business in Virginia.
Right.
Like, a, a company in Virginia. If I bought something online on that company in Virginia, but they don't have no represent here, they have to collect that, sell that online in Virginia and then send it to California. Because they, they, but they would not have a physical presence in California.
I do understand that, but I, that, that was already law though, right, Mr. City Attorney? Anybody trying to sell into California, California obliges them to, to charge.
Why don't I provide you with, uh, a memo on that, we're spending too much time on this, this wasn't agendized.
Okay.
Oh, really? Okay, alright, I see how it is.
It is worth it.
Elected officials' report should be maybe thirty seconds to one minute per subject.
Oh, okay, okay.
And, uh, Mr. Uh.
Did I go a little bit over?
I'll definitely remind you guys in the future. But yeah, so it's max ten minutes, um, just so you know.
Okay, whoa, alright. I'm sorry. Alright, alright, thank you. No, but I'm definitely interested in hearing about that, um, the pass-through going to, now I'm on my report. The pass-through coming to the city should definitely be coming, uh, coming to us.
Yes.
The pass-through is very important. Congratulations, Chief Mike Ishi on your appointment. Really happy to see you as our official Chief of Police. Um, I've already talked to you about a couple of items, especially with the homeless. And, uh, we really need to consider our residents, people who live here first. Uh, they're our priority, protecting them, having them safe, and their quality of life. All else, all else comes second, in my opinion. So I know we have to navigate laws and things that the state government is doing, like we see now, they wanna do these hokey things that they wanna do. People should think about who they elect in the first place. But, uh, we, we gotta do it, what we have to do and navigate and protect our residents. Alright, so thank you for stepping up to that, and I think in a couple of weeks you kinda give us something, right? Thank you. Once more, I'd like to thank Mayor Pro Tem, uh, recent former, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Hader Awat for helping me out and, uh, representing the community as a, a Vice Mayor of the Mayor Pro Tem. So thank you once more. Congratulations, uh, to Councilwoman Olivia Valentine, who is now our new Mayor Pro Tem. Thank you for stepping up and, uh, looking forward to doing great things with you as well. Jasmine Esquivias, thank you for joining the Youth Commission. Um, they've, uh, they've had like four members, they've been able to operate, but now with the third, uh, young adult member of the group, they'll be able to proceed with some more concrete, uh, actions that they'll be able to come up. Make sure you contribute as much as you can and don't be shy, ask us for what you need from the City Council. And we'll provide help or give you leads as to where you can find help for some of the things you wanna do with the youth, okay? So, um, Happy MLK Day. Uh, definitely a very great example of what it is. Kickstarted a lot of the civil rights movements here in the United States, uh, for a lot of the other groups, including the Mexican-American Civil Rights Movement and, uh, other movements that we've had. So, uh, congratulations to all those who celebrate that and those who have benefited. And congratulations to the LA Unified School District, it seems like they've already reached a tentative agreement. Um, I think it's going to get ratified by the teachers, the teachers get to vote on this agreement. Their negotiators met with the LAUSD negotiators. Um, and, uh, the union and the school districts have come to a tentative agreement, so hopefully the teachers, uh, will not see a problem with that and just move forward. Uh, make sure, let, let's hope that like, uh, that they're able to survive going forward. Sometimes, um, people give in a little bit more on both sides than they should, so, uh, we just wanna make sure that everything moves on smoothly with the, with the school district over there. What else? Is there anything anybody else wants to talk about?
Don't forget the Rams, okay?
The Rams, LA Rams, not the Chargers, sorry. I know you're kinda like friends with a lot of the Charger people, but you know what? Um, I don't care, as long as it's an L A team, man, and those Patriots, I don't like them, I really don't like them. They're pretty snobby, aren't they, I don't know who's a fan here of the Patriots.
I am.
Well, you have a.
I'm a Patriot fan.
Well, we need to talk. You spend more time on the West Coast than the East Coast, or what, then, I wanna get on you because of that. Yeah, I know, but still, that doesn't sound right, but, alright.
Are we still rooting for the Rams?
The Rams are good, the Rams are good. Alright?
Rams are gonna be down the street, okay, you guys?
Yeah, the Rams are.
Let's have a little loyalty.
Alright, folks, so this meeting is now adjourned.